Republic, which is a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the second part session. First item on the agenda is council members who may have to sign a little trail letter, which I think is everybody's on that?
Yeah.
Larry.
All right. Please Larry.
Terri said that's nice.
And council members who may have to sign thank you note for Adams, that's also in there, right?
Yes.
And then one more.
Okay.
All right, Crown Victoria Police Car Repair Bill in the amount of nine eighty-nine seventy. Who wanted to?
I mean, thoughts on this? They did the work without authorization.
Without authorization.
So was that, was that confirmed with the gas station that they, they, anybody call them at all or?
I didn't speak to them. I think Allison said that.
Chris did, didn't he?
Or was it Chris?
Either Chris or Allison, I think spoke with them, and my understanding was they said they just provide an estimate.
She wrote to him, provide an estimate. We would like, because it will have to be approved first, and then he did it.
And I don't know if it was he or his assistant, it doesn't really matter, but they said the parts were there, so they, they did the work, so I don't know.
You gotta, to me, you gotta.
I, I'm gonna not pay for it.
No.
Yeah, I, I talked over her um, an hour ago, and when, and it sounded like it was confused, you know, somebody brought the car, then somebody else brought it, and somebody else. And, and the guy's got, you know, five, well, more than five hundred, six, seven hundred dollars worth of, of parts, so you might as well pay. But we might as well, we had discussed, uh, holding purchases to over ten thousand dollars to let the council see them and approve them first. And so, we ought to do that.
Over one thousand?
One, we ought to have, we ought to pay, and then two, we ought to reaffirm the fact that we're, we're not gonna have purchases under a thousand dollars done without council approval.
Yeah, that's.
So what's the threshold, the monetary threshold?
It used to be, it used to be six hundred, I thought.
One hundred?
Or five hundred.
Right.
There was five hundred.
But we discussed, we discussed a thousand there, and it's probably lost.
Well, we can, at the next council meeting, you're gonna have to vote on what you want that threshold to be.
Yeah.
But I think if we get a consensus, I'm seeing how we not pay him.
No, we are, yeah.
I think we all agree.
Well, we would be voting on paying for the next council session, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
We need it on the agenda, so.
What I mean.
Yeah, I don't see how we.
All right, so the motion to pay the bill will be on the next one, and then a, a motion to.
Establish, establish.
Is there any established or?
A threshold for the.
Establish.
Yeah.
Monetary threshold, threshold.
Or what has to be voted on at the council.
But she did tell me.
For council.
I don't know what happens.
So we're taking, we're saying we should take a threshold from five hundred up to a thousand, so more money should be able to be spent without council's approval?
Well, you can look at it that way, but you can also look at it, the fact that, you know, i- if you make it too low, it's never gonna work, because work's just gonna back up in thousands of.
Well, it's been at five hundred, where has there been an issue with, with uh, getting something approved, or five hundred, over six, what is it, five or six?
I thought it was five.
Five.
Yeah, I, I haven't seen it, that there was a problem, but I can see.
So if you raise it higher, though, then that means we can spend more money without approval.
Without prior approval.
Yes, but on the other hand, I, I think it's more workable if you make it a significant amount of money. If, if you leave it at five hundred, I, I certainly am not in a camp that would say, no, no, don't do that, but it would seem like the more signif- significant if it's uh, a thousand, but. We're gonna come up with one next meeting.
It seems the opposite of what you're trying to accomplish. You want things to be, to, of a higher number to be approved by council, right?
Right, if, if you go to five hundred, there's, there's, there's many things that would have to come to this table and be approved at five hundred. It is, is less noteworthy if a thousand, it look, noteworthy to a thousand, when it's a thousand, less things come, but we do work at it. If that makes any sense.
I don't think that.
But, but if people still wanna see five hundred, let, let it be five hundred, and then, you know.
I actually thought it was six hun- I actually thought it was six hundred.
Well, why at the next council meeting?
It was fine.
We'll vote on it.
Okay.
Seven fifty, seventy.
Everybody can think of it in between seven fifty is a compromise.
All right.
Six hundred, seven fifty.
Hundred and seventy fifty.
Okay.
Okay.
That one you done it?
Okay. So then, that's the second one, that other motion. Personnel, new additional police for the season.
So I was in last Friday, and we had a police officer come in off the street, um, and take an application from Allison.
Okay.
See if anything comes of it. Um, I've been thinking a lot lately, what kind of things keep me up at night, um, is maybe we do need to, uh, we're getting close to a year of trying to get a seasonal officer. I would be more in support of the, or I am more in support of the police commission route, that our solicitor says we would need to go to have a part-time, year-round force of three officers or more, something we need to think about.
I thought we, I thought we always tried to have that, just being part of anybody.
No, we are trying to get a third, fourth, fifth seasonal officer right now, someone who would just be on the books for like three months out of the year. Because a third officer would trigger the need for a, a, yeah, a, a body of three individuals to, uh, deal with, like, essentially labor dispute type stuff and discipline. And there are requirements for the makeup of that, that three, like, I don't think you can be a borough council member and be on it.
No, you can't, you can't be.
Yeah.
And that's, and that was, that was, how many officers that we would need commissioned?
Three, three. If we go to a third.
Three or more.
Okay, but you're going to the third as a part-time?
Third as seasonal slash temporary.
Part-time counts towards the numbers, so it has to be seasonal.
Seasonal full-time or seasonal part-time?
Seasonal, seasonal.
Yeah, it could be seasonal full-time.
It could be, it could be seasonal working eighty-hour weeks, but it's, it's the three months out of the year. And nobody really wants to do that. We're not finding anybody who wants to do that.
But then when you're talking about a, a, adding more and a commission, which is more cost.
The commission would be the cost of a, a solicitor for the commission.
Yeah.
Right, and then in order to get, if you're making this seasonal.
With the commission, it's not seasonal, commission.
So they'd have to be licensed and everything, all the normal things would happen?
Yes, no matter, no matter who we get to be a police officer, they always, they have to have the, the act.
Certifications and all sorts.
But I don't see how that's any different, if we get three, we, and we're, we're talking, we're talking about full-time versus part-time. And you start talking about hours and salary, are we doing part-time and paying a solicitor? Or are we hiring full-time?
Part-time.
Part-time?
Yeah.
So the way hours.
I thought we didn't need a solicitor if it was part-time.
We do need a solicitor if it's three or more part-time.
But if it's one seasonal and two part-time, you don't, then you don't need a police commission.
Two full-time and a million seasonal. If you have two officers who are on your regular payroll, you don't need commission. If you have three more officers that are regular payroll, as in year-round type employees, doesn't matter if they're full-time, part-time, doesn't matter, if they're working one hour a month for twelve months. That, part, part-time, if you have three or more.
I would need to see the number of hours you anticipate each one of them working, how much salary that would be, plus the cost of the commissioner.
The solicitor.
Solicitor.
Yeah.
And whether or not you could actually get those three peoples still to come in and work the hours that we need, because it doesn't make any sense to incur a solicitor and still have nobody showing up.
Right.
We just raised our, our expenses and still don't have coverage.
We, we just got done discussing five hundred versus a thousand, uh, and, you know, what was the need? Are we having a problem with the current staffing? It seemed like it's really working well, but that's been a long time.
They aren't using all their hours that we gave them. Is that a problem?
No.
Yes, no, um, if we're happy with the covers we're getting. There is the concern that the two of them are potentially burning out, because they're trying to cover as much as they can, or there are asks, you know, of them to be here at times. And I actually wanna avoid that. I don't want to burn out the two people we have.
And how are they being burned out? They're not, they're not working even the full amount of.
Well, we did not intend that thirty-five or so hours a week would be covered by just two people, you know, we thought we would have seasonal people on a rotation, so it would be a three or four-man crew.
Well, we're gonna end up with.
We now went from three, from two to three to three to four.
In this discussion now, but, yeah, but last year, when we were trying to hire seasonal, we weren't trying to hire one seasonal person per season, we were looking at a three, four man. I mean, for the purposes of the law that we're, we're working under, it triggers at the third person.
Yeah, I get it.
That's why I've been saying three.
But the point is, we're not even using the hours for two people.
Because the two people cannot commit to those hours. They can't, they, they can't, with their other jobs, work the hours it's given them.
Okay, so we're, we're back to something we, we, we spent a lot of time on. We have people, but the people can't work the hours we want. So that we're going to correct the problem by going and hiring new people.
Additional people.
Additional people, even though they, they're not using the hours that they're given, so, you know, i- if you imagine.
Do you see that as a problem? I, I don't, I, I see what you're saying, but.
Imagine one would have them be able to work the hours we want, so let's say we had two guys there, they're all great, pick one out, plug one in, plug one in, that can work the hours we want. So it sounds like we're back to the, where we were a year or two ago, where, um, you know, we, we have the people, but they can't work the hours we want.
Right, and this solution was the one we came towards, because we are not, we're not gonna make these decisions full-time. And nobody wants to be a part-time officer for twenty, two dollars an hour.
And that's my point, so when you get the third person, and they only have these many hours, we're still at the same situation, because it's like, oh, it's not enough hours to be worth my while. But now we've incurred the expense of a solicitor, because it's, it's a third person. I think our issue is to find someone, I mean, people that, those hours are fine with them, or one full-time person.
Does it also benefit associated with a full-time person?
I'm trying, I have to see, I have to see the expenses on paper, because three encourage a solicitor, three still may not be able to cover the hours. And then we have.
Four, or five, or six.
Well, it is a matching number for the amount of hours you need covered every week. What are they covering now? What's the average they're covering the last few weeks?
Do you have any?
Not for them.
And I mean, has anybody had a conversation with?
No, no, yeah, yeah.
I think we need to put the numbers down on paper and see financially.
Get that conversation.
What you get and what you're paying.
And maybe we should have a conversation with the chief.
Yeah, talk to the chief and see, here's our issue, here's our problem.
What can we do?
You know, what are our options? We don't wanna step on your toes, you've done a great job, you know, what can we do to, to try to cure the situation? And how many hours you see being employed to solve?
Cause it sounds like going back to what we.
Well, you don't want, and another cost of the solicitor, I'd try to, I want that.
I, I, I don't know why we, we, we can't get more people from ESU, I mean.
Well, has anybody aggressively tried to do that? I mean, does Jim?
Reach out to Bill Parrish and see, you know, I, I spoke to him a couple of months ago at, at a function, and, um, he was amenable to talking, but I mean, obviously, he, he doesn't control, you know, the moonlighting of his, of his officers. But he was amenable to putting up a flyer or handing us something out for us, but we don't seem to be then.
And, and, and Jim works over there, so Jim might have, he might have.
And I spoke to Jim about it too, we just, nobody else seems to want it, maybe they're getting paid enough, but they don't have the moonlight anymore, I, I don't know.
Well, I think it's worth a conversation with Mike and Jim, and see what we can do and help, what our options are.
Also, I think we need to put on paper, number of officers, hours, salary, with additional officers, what we anticipate they will be able to work. And what that will, plus the solicitor, and what that will cost us, because we stand the risk of doing that and still not getting anyone to cover those hours, because it's, it's like, it's such a small amount of hours, it's up to a person's availability, and whether or not, you know, I drive over here and work a couple of hours, and it really worked the pittance of money.
Well, I think that's why you need to start with the chief and Jim to find out, determine what they feel we could, the best way to solve the problem is, tell them, here's what our issue is.
Yeah, I think you should.
You know, what can you, you know, we'd like to hire maybe a third seasonal, but we're having a problem with that. Do you guys know anybody, or can you work a few more hours? We don't wanna burn you out, we appreciate everything you do, we hired you based on what.
What's their best, what's their bottom line?
Yeah, what are, what are their thoughts?
And I think you might wanna include Larry too, since he's the mayor.
Well, of course, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Larry should be in the conversation. Larry, Anne.
So the whole reason I bring this up is because this comes from Mike, two weeks ago, part of an email he sent to me is, uh, uh, we haven't received any applications for seasonal police officers, I'm concerned that we're entering a busy season and do not have adequate staffing, the only way I can see to help us recruit is to increase our summer patrol hours and more pay. So I'm, I'm not making this up, we're doing it without them being looped in, this was, you know, uh.
Well, why don't we get Larry, though? I mean, he's in charge of the police.
Yeah, and he was, he was on this.
Let's get Larry to the conversation.
So what do you wanna do with this suggestion, instead of meeting?
I mean, I can get the numbers that Lisa wants to see, what, uh, kind of hours they're using, have to look up what kind of hours we approved.
And look for the need.
And we just, and we just increased the pay.
We did.
And we, and we increased the pay to, to, or as incentive for night and we.
I don't know, you quantify need. I mean, I don't know what you're looking for.
It's hard, but i- if we're going to, you know, make a whole new agenda here in order to hire a new person, might go back to why.
The, the cost associated with the, with the solicitor for a commission, they'll create a commission, we don't, the commissioners don't get paid, they're members of the community that are not on council. And we would only be using the solicitor if there was a disciplinary issue, that the commission would be involved, and the solicitor would have to sit in like, as, as an arbitrator. Uh, to give them their due process, you know, you have a right to remain, you know, silent and not have to answer questions, or when you're in disciplinary. So we only would really run into costs associated with the commission if there was a disciplinary issue.
There's no retain, no retain.
We, the retainer, but the retainer is, you know, if you use it, if you don't use it, you, you know, they hold on to it, you know, so we would give them money initially, but they may never, it may never be used, because we may never have a, you know, and the need for the solicitor.
But listening to this.
With the solicitors for them, for their protection.
Right, right.
So if they want the solicitor, they could speak to the solicitor, and that could run up expenses.
But listening to this, now, hearing this, it sounds like I'm working a few hours, but I still want more mon- the same thing I said about hiring a third one. Is it worth my while to come for the money? Now, we did a salary increase, January, I mean, this year, and we made an incentive for night and weekends. So are we gonna raise your salary and we still only get a few hours? I mean, so that, raising it for the hours wasn't sufficient.
It was understood back in the day that you were raising the, the pay, so that you could cab people that cover those hours that we want them there, and they didn't. We, we evidently, uh, added to the pay without having the other side of the equation.
Now, Jim has worked on Saturday, I've seen Jim work on the weekends. Jim has been controlling on the weekends, so I'm saying, I think we need to gather all the facts.
Yeah, cause how, how is raising your pay one time, and then raising the second time, giving me more hours, and making me more available? So, I, it sounds like it's not an issue of having, well, it is an issue of having another officer, but they're saying, well, we need more pay, but we just went through a whole budgeting thing of giving them more pay.
So.
How does more pay make you more available?
He said.
Right.
He believes that that would be.
More pay could attract new people.
Right.
Well, that's true.
He didn't say you need more.
But, I mean, we did raise it.
We did, and it didn't work. Obviously, we've got one purpose.
It didn't, it didn't work for that purpose, it worked, it did work for the, the shift, to get the right shifts.
We're, we're trying to get more coverage on the weekend, we have parking issues, and when really we need it in town, I mean, Monday afternoon, Tuesday afternoon in town's not usually a critical time.
Okay, then, then we have to look at, if we hire, if we find a third person, and we raise the pay again, can we afford that? Cause if they all start working more hours because we raised the pay even higher, can we afford to pay these three people?
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we raise the pay.
How about, how about a sign-on bonus? A lot of police agencies are often.
I think that, I think a heavier recruitment with the ESU people, let the, that the ESU officer know.
Definitely start there.
That we are open.
Yeah, I think so, I think.
I mean, put an ad out or something, and, and put the ad out, and, and go hand it to them.
There, there's one other thing that ought to be thought of, and I don't necessarily agree with it, but it comes up, is, you know, we're here, and all around us are township's that do not have their own police department, all around us are, are township's, uh, that that if you go per capita, we outpace them quite, quite a bit. Because you can go out Cherry Valley or certain other places, and, and go sit on a rock somewhere and wait for a, a, a state trooper to go by, and you're gonna be there a long time, and so, what we have here is, is the ability to have troopers who are out there on eighty all the time, crew that'd be here in three minutes, versus, um, have somebody in the township waiting for a state police car. That'd be much longer, but if you wanna use, you know, start for root cause and base, and start building your case from there, you, it's, it's pretty hard to do it, just for the moment. I, we, we, we do have the people that are able to make the forums and show up here, do their investigation, and do a hell of a good job. So, you know, i- if we've gone six months, having our current crew do a great job for us, um.
I, I know that there's been two fairly serious incidents in the borough within the past, I know one was fairly recent, I wanna say, but the other was about two months ago, and coming home, yeah, I had to come home, uh, with friends of mine on a Wednesday night, there were state troopers, lights off, doing surveillance work. And another time, an incident, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I saw four state troopers out of, out of certain residences. They're here. Be careful.
Bill, what you're saying is absolutely correct, that, that they are available.
That becomes very expensive.
That can call, I mean, they are there.
I made a stop up there, past the cemetery at the tree area, and when I went out of town, I saw, you know, one trooper had, had a car stopped, when I came back, there were four squad cars there, or whatever you'd call them. There were four of them, each man by at least one trooper, so, well, I, I think you have to, it is good we started our thinking in, at that level and build it up. And, and there are people that wanna see the police car, and let, let's give it to them, and then let's give it to them with two police cars, but when you start to go to three and four, then I think we have to take a hard look at it.
You wanna invite the chief, the mayor to a next personnel meeting, even if it's Zoom, if we'd be, and then, you know, how can we figure out, you know, how to proceed, but that's not until second Friday in a month, which would be, um, June ninth. You wanna try to do that?
Yeah.
All right, so then we'll report back, is that our meeting, actually, it's after the meeting, so that takes us into July.
And, and our season really starts as soon as school's out, you get all the parking, the hikers on the weekends, but really, the critical time is Saturday, in summer.
Try to do it before.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can set up something before. Let's, next week.
Reach out with, uh, with Larry and.
Yeah, I'll reach out. Do something next week.
Okay.
Did you get a chance to see the application that guy had stopped in there?
Uh, no. Probably not, I haven't returned it yet.
I just picked it up.
What kind of finances are you talking about for sign-on bonus?
Just a suggestion.
No, how much?
No, I, I mean, I.
Do you have a suggestion, or?
No, I'm just saying, because they're gonna be part-time, what do they have to do, work ten years to pay it off? If they're all gonna be here ten hours a week?
Never pay it off.
No, I mean, you, wouldn't you have to, wouldn't they have to be obligated to be here for a certain, certain amount of time?
I don't know, it was just a suggestion, it was just a suggestion.
I just started off.
I don't know.
All right, police gets, they, we've budgeted them thirty hours a week. Looking at the last payroll journal, Mike's doing about a shift eight hours a week, and Jim's doing, uh, about twelve hours a week. Uh, let's see. That's twelve hours, no, six hours a week. And they're using less than half of their hours between them.
So they have a lot of hours banked in January?
Banks, hours continue to bank, so there'd be a lot of money budgeted for police that's not being spent on the police.
And, and how many hours for Mike is, are, um, are his hours, um, administration?
Most of his hours, I think he probably comes in for a day, does the paperwork.
Exactly.
Gets, you know, in the truck and does a couple of laps, to spend some more time.
But the cool thing is, you know, when he's here doing paperwork, he's.
He's here.
He's here, yeah.
Somebody called.
Yeah.
Hey, file, file some reports and things that need to be done.
Yeah, there's.
And then supplement that, but I, I think I have to start the conversation with the two of them, Larry, and see what we can do, and then we have to put a full court press on to try to get a seasonal officer, whether it's ESU or whatever.
Or maybe Adams let us use the bulletin board to put up a, you know, a help wanted police officer ad or something.
That's a good idea.
You'd rather get it from Jim or hire him. Cause I know what happens if you go public like that.
Might have about a ten thousand.
Crazy, they know where.
I don't know, I don't know if I would advocate for this, um, cause it would probably be revolving door, but I know Andy got, um, Aspen out of the academy, didn't she, didn't he?
Yeah, but she was gone real quick, too.
Well, that, it, right, I mean.
Which, I mean, they all went on leave.
Well, they're not gonna stay here if they're gonna get a full-time gig somewhere, but, but she was awesome.
And she was good.
The gentleman who came in to get the application is a sheriff's deputy in, uh, on the county here.
So he already has training.
He became a sheriff's deputy after being a officer in Luzerne County, um.
Municipal.
Municipal officer.
Oh, that's sound good.
So he wants, he's looking for something like this to, part-time, nights, weekends, to keep his certification and stuff, his things, and that's like the kind of unicorn we're looking for.
That sounds promising.
So it's, somebody suggested that the, I don't know if a sheriff's deputy can moonlight as an officer, I don't know.
We'll find out. Hope he comes back and. Take it back.
D C E D multimodal grant application.
Okay, Missy redid the, um, cost assessment for the Mountain Road project. So that we can, um, vote on submitting a grant proposal before July, end of July. But the numbers that she presented, she said that our matching was ten percent, yet the numbers that she shows does not reflect ten percent. And when I go on the D C E D multimodal website, it says thirty percent, but I also know that sometimes in the fine print, there is an exception for small municipalities, so I need to, and I sent her an email, she hasn't gotten back to me, I need to clear that up, so I can bring you all absolute.
Factual.
Factual, what the obligation would be to apply for the grant. So I got this, and then I looked at it, and I went, okay, this doesn't look right, I researched it, maybe I'm not looking at it right, so I need to get back with Missy on that, and, and we can, um, vote on it then.
At the next council meeting.
Yeah, she redid, and everything, of course, cost is increased by a percentage. Yeah, she redid, and everything, of course, cost is increased by a percentage. So it's a little bit more, but I need to get straight on what the actual percentage is for matching.
But are there any other grants out there that you need?
There's others, but I gotta I gotta sit down and and sit through those two.
What do we have out there pending right now?
Nothing right now. We got the traffic lights that are, they've gotten their permission stuff for that. I forgot Larry's email.
Okay.
That they're getting all that for the traffic speed rate signs.
They've got to make a big difference.
Yeah. So as soon as I get those numbers, I'll get them out to you guys. And then we can vote to apply.
Great.
Alright, anything else on that? Fire Department's request for borrowed budget twenty thousand dollars towards air packs in twenty twenty-four. Alright, Howard, I think you made the request. Are you going to talk about that?
Uh, that's what we've talked about before, budgeting it for twenty twenty-four.
Where where are you all on the with the purchase? What are you, what did you decide?
We had a meeting with uh Jim on and Jamie, John Smith will be there and and we're gonna look at the E S S A loan that they wish.
So you got the loan?
Oh, yeah, we can have a loan.
We the terms, terms.
We're gonna look at the terms of the loan.
Loan terms, five-year, ten-year, fifteen-year.
Yeah, with the twenty thousand down. But we also received uh ten thousand dollars that we're gonna add to that from a a grant from Terra Probes.
That was the grant.
And and the new amount?
Ten thousand dollar grant, yeah.
And the new amount have what?
It was actually supposed to be for our Q R S, but she said we could use it for the air packages there.
Okay. Well, speak to the 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 initial price was higher, but then because of some things.
Yeah, it went from a hundred and twenty-six thousand down to a hundred and eighteen.
The total purchase price?
It it more like one nineteen.
Okay.
Want to round up, just. And we are gonna put the twenty plus the ten down. And I have a letter in Smithfield as well. So that'll help lower the payment. That's.
Did they respond? And so what they would?
I'm gonna go to their meetings tonight. I'm gonna go to the next one. And and.
And you still have?
And I talked to Jake. He he was forward, so next year, of course, so was Lucas, their finance person.
Their control. Is this all January payout?
Yeah.
But you could order ahead of time?
Yes.
And you what?
And we'll get the loan. We'll put
Ten grand down?
Twenty of our own, thirty thousand, twenty of our own plus the ten dollars.
And then repay that?
And then, yeah.
Okay, alright. When's your meeting with Jim?
Uh, this Saturday, we're gonna meet. We'll meet at our firehouse.
So thirty thousand down makes the payments what? You don't know the terms of the grant, right?
Depends if you do five, ten, or fifteen years.
Yeah.
I'm trying to figure out can we give less because you got ten thousand from Terra Probes.
Well, at twenty thousand, we're, I think, at eighteen hundred a month.
And you brought the you brought the price down eight thousand. So you got ten thousand from Terra Probes. You brought the price down eight thousand.
It all comes down to monthly payment, at least. We're not getting that.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, we'll all know that to a meeting on Saturday.
It's needed.
You gotta wait till Saturday. I I don't think we can evaluate that until we see what the terms are.
It's needed.
You know what I mean? Because they're gonna be five, ten, or fifteen years, and what's the interest rate? So we gotta look at the monthly payments at at each level to see to see what's affordable.
But sometimes it's possible that um twenty-five thousand, the payment is not any different than thirty thousand. Maybe a a couple of, you know, dollars. So I'm trying to to figure out how to help them, but also not hurt us. But they got ten thousand dollars and they got eight thousand dollars cut off the price.
Right.
And it's a possibility that they may still get the grant because the contingency on anything that we give would be based on whether or not they get the grant.
If they get the grant, it's a moot point. Everybody gets it.
Right.
Right?
Right.
It's a moot point. But I understand what you're saying, but let's get the terms and then we can evaluate what we can afford to do.
Absolutely.
We need that.
We're still asking for twenty thousand.
Yeah, I know you are, but we need to see whether or not we need to, we're we're the skin of our teeth and we're not getting in any extra money, so we need to make sure that we give you as much as we can. And.
That's not what was discussed last time for next year.
It's not based on, it was it was a number thrown out there, Howard, and what we are doing is we're we're shaving everything to keep everything else going.
So we're doing everything we can.
Excuse me. If we could possibly get you what you need and your payment terms are within the same range and it still helps us save some of what we need, then we can do that. I mean, like when you're buying a car, sometimes uh the terms of a car loan, you know, you say, how much is it in four years if I pay it off in five years? How much if I pay it off in seven years? And sometimes there is a small difference between those things, so you may not need.
Well, I understand that difference.
And when we, when you first brought to us twenty thousand, it was eight thousand dollars more in cost and you didn't have ten thousand from Terra Probes. So you need to help us help you. So if you need twenty from us and we're tight and you get eighteen and you still want twenty from us, you gotta give us some breathing room, too, to try and and keep us going afloat here. Because we got police officers want more pay. People over here want money. We've got to, we've got to we try to do as much as we can with as little that we have. So we with the terms of the of the loan, that would be great to know exactly what you really need.
Can we find that out next week?
Saturday's the meeting. Why don't we wait to get all the facts and go?
Get all the information, yeah, and evaluate it.
And can you email us after the meeting, early next week, the all the time stuff? We're gonna look at it.
What information are you looking?
Terms of the loan.
That's all you want?
And lend it along, the payment.
Interest rate.
And and the necessary down payment.
Who's contributing what?
Well, you just got who's contributing, right?
No, not exactly. You got Smithfield.
Ten thousand, what we got so far?
Terra Probes, ten thousand.
Ten thousand plus about, the minus eight.
So far. Eight, eight was a reduction in the price.
It's a reduction in the price, which means less down payment. Or less payments, less amount on the payment.
Still want the twenty thousand.
The original amount that was quoted for the payment would be less.
They still want that down payment. No matter what the price was, they want twenty thousand dollar down payment.
Who wants twenty thousand dollar down payment?
The uh.
The bank. The the bank?
Yes.
Okay, so you got ten of it.
Let's wait till we get all the terms. Look at the monthly payment, look at the other end, and can make a more intelligent decision.
Yeah, we need all the numbers.
Sure add the terms.
And we're we're now giving them all of the money that was formally uh headed to the.
That's one thing we spoke of, working on that when when it's budget time.
Talk about that.
We would talk about returning the portion that was taken out of the fire tax from them back to them, but that's something to be discussed October.
Last meeting, it was, you know, you you guys used your twenty thousand dollars to do it back to put in our budget for next year, and now it's changing.
But everything's changed. A lot of things have changed. Your amount of the of the packets have changed, the amount that Terra Probes gave you has changed, and we still do this in terms of the loan.
But you understand that, you know, when you said that the last time, we the fire department relied on that.
No, we we said.
But now it's changed and and I understand it's changed.
We have constantly been discussing.
It's hard to rely on things.
What what you, we haven't even been clear on what you were gonna purchase and where you were gonna get it from and who you were gonna have it financed by. And we've all been, wait a minute, excuse me, I'm talking. We've all been working together with that. I'm not saying we're not doing anything. I'm saying we just need to see what we're doing. Because we have other things that we have to do. And if if the if the house was on fire and the only thing that would put it out is twenty thousand dollars, then we have to find twenty thousand dollars. But if we can get by and can save the borough with with less and help you do what you need to do, then that's what we have to do. That's why we're here.
Let's get all the facts and then we'll make it to see.
Alright, anything else on that? Alright, about, there's no, nothing on here for uh, we do, when do you public comment first before?
I have two things. I'd like to do that and get on there. Um, Rhodes has been talking about uh a couple of paving projects that we need to get done. Uh Cherokee is falling apart. Shepherd Court is falling apart. And Mincy has some, has a bad stretch. We have neighborhood of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in liquid fuels, which has to be spent on roads. Um, there are some uh hoops you have to jump through uh to use that money. Um, so Allison uh has been working on getting connected with our municipal services rep uh to make sure that that we go about this the right way. In the meantime, I reached out to the four contractors who bid on the Cherry Valley Road Project um to ask them to uh give us estimates. Um, two of them got back to me. One's already been in the borough and I showed all of the uh the roads. His kind of quick write-up sort of back of the envelope was about a hundred thousand dollars uh for those three roads and a lot of uh rubberized tar crack sealing just kind of around the borough, like a mile's worth of crack sealing or something, maybe more um for roads that are in okay shape. Shepard Ave has little cracks, Mountain has little cracks, Hornet. One of the other, I think it was Barker, Barker got back to me and wanted a like prepared bid request uh given to them. So we're still waiting to hear back from municipal municipal services person. Um, one of our previous ones, Jeff?
John?
No, the guy who came to the borough back when.
Yeah.
Said that like doing that kind of prep work is something that the municipal services department would do and we would have to pay our engineer. So I am going to ask them, I'm gonna say, hey, can you guys help us like spec this out and
Put it in bid form?
And put it in bid form? Um, if they don't do that or they won't do that, then we're gonna need to uh engage our engineer to do that. And that's gonna have to be out of pocket for us. You can't use liquid fuels for engineering expenses. So that would have to come out of roads. So hopefully municipal services.
Who was the one that said a hundred thousand plus?
Uh, Brad, back of the line, Ty.
Alright, well, we'll get through the four bids, so.
Yeah, try to get at least four.
The key is now to to get the bid form as soon as possible so we get a whole bid.
Yeah.
Because it's May.
Yeah.
But I think that's the way to go. You gotta hit those three areas and the crack seal of the roads that are starting to crack on the edges.
Yeah.
Will we reach out to Bob Markin soon?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Yeah, you were gonna reach out to Bob Markin, right?
Yeah, yeah, as soon as we get the information.
Yep.
I'll talk to Bob.
And just a comment on the sealant that was put on last time we did the the borough. It it was so badly done.
We know who did it.
I don't know.
I have to look it up.
Do you you remember that?
No, it was before my time.
Was it?
It was before my time on board.
But did you see?
It it was crappy. It 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 was bad.
It came out.
Yeah.
Right, okay, so most people here have seen it, but what what happened, they they cleared on, it didn't stick.
It peeled right off.
With a shovel and shoveled it back into a a truck or something.
Well, I would expect Chris to supervise it. He said that when you put that stuff down, you have to blow torch the road first.
Just saying, yeah.
Yeah, that's what the spec said.
Hot treatment on on a cold road, you have to.
You have to heat keep the road.
Right, okay, so.
Chris, Chris is aware.
Keep an eye on that.
Yeah. Uh, my second thing is in March, we approved twenty-one hundred and change uh to get the hydraulic cylinders for the backhoe serviced. Um, in the meantime, I was at my company's hydraulic shop, so I asked the guy, hey, how much to repack some cylinders? And so I got him to email me and he doesn't have the exact specs to know, but he said probably about three hundred dollars a cylinder versus over a thousand dollars a cylinder. Um.
It's two cylinders?
It's two cylinders, yeah. Um, and that's all the shop does is just rebuild cylinders all day. Um, so Rhodes suggested that we
Obviously go down that road.
Go down that road instead. Uh, I'm gonna email Deb because the motion um simply approved the dollars. It didn't state who had to do the work. So I'm gonna email Deb and see if we need to do anything other than just take it to a different place of
And there's an example.
Or maybe, yeah, maybe just pay the bill.
There's an example where the seven fifty would work.
Yeah, yeah, because it could be six hundred dollars, it could be seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, obviously we'll go that way.
So I'll email everybody to give everybody a chance to.
And and if you guys remember Zach's garage or Blue Ridge Kids Garage or whatever, we did the dump truck overall, saved us saved us a ton of money there.
Yeah, it's the same.
It's great to have that.
Jamie, I I have one item.
Yeah, you got it.
Okay, so um I'm I want to give everybody a packet. These, this is the last their most recent modification to the zoning ordinance that Carson did uh pursuant to some comments made by Monroe County Commission. So I'm just gonna read briefly what these are and then I'm gonna give you the packets. And then please call me if anybody has any questions. Um, there were some issues with definitions. Um, they were clarified. Um, one issue that came up was um the county was concerned that we didn't have a place for cattle, right? Believe it or not. And Carson's comment was if, obviously, we don't have a place for cattle, but if there are, if there is a a contingency in the new zoning ordinance that allows you to uh assign a use that has not been uh previously defined in the zoning ordinance. So like if somebody comes up with a use that's not listed in the zoning ordinance, I can't imagine they would. There is a, there is a process in the new zoning ordinance that says, okay, go to the zoning hearing board, let's see what that use is. Let's find the best use in the in the zoning ordinance where it would go. So that there is a way of uh covering uses that not that are not listed there.
So they wouldn't be allowed to just
No, they just can't.
Have cattle in any any area? How does that take it out? Because if we don't delineate cat a place for cattle, then they could go to our one zone with their cattle, right?
Right, so so.
This mechanism takes aside of that?
Right, so basically, the people that are trying to come into town with whatever use that is, they don't see a use listed in the zoning ordinance. They would, they would have to go through this process in the zoning hearing board, through the planning commission and council in terms of then they, those three bodies would decide where that use would go. Like they just can't come in and say, since it's not here, it can go anywhere. I mean, there's a whole, the the amount of uses listed in the new schedule of use is probably about five times that amount listed in the current zoning ordinance. So Carson thought that would be adequate to cover any uses that somebody could possibly come up with that.
Like a casual?
Yeah, yeah. Um, there, one thing that came up, and I'm just, just to pull me back up a little bit. Uh, we we had a meeting with the planning commission to discuss these issues, so I'm kind of talking with the planning commissioner right, but but for the planning commissioner right now. There was a issue with what's called wireless communication facilities. Um, those are basically cell towers. Uh, but they can also be uh considered um power enhancers for people that don't have good cellphone coverage. The county, so previously in the draft, Carson recommended that we only allow wireless communication facilities in industrial zone areas in these second cell towers. The county came back, says you might want to consider this for people's households. Like if you you could actually buy boosters, that would be very confined in nature. Uh, they're regulated by the FCC and all that they would serve to do would be to boost your cellphone coverage. I think that would would be a pretty pretty good idea. You know, if some people need like some type of emergency, police emergency, healthcare emergency, they can't get good coverage um that these items would probably would provide that boost in in coverage. I was actually, I I didn't know what they were at first. I was talking to Eric about it. He says, yeah, I got one on my cap and um if I didn't have that, I wouldn't have any cell coverage. And uh.
But is it a tower or?
No, this would just be a small antenna at your house, I guess.
Like the extenders?
Yeah, I'm not sure. So I that's, so I talked to Carson today about that, and that's basically, he said, what their intended use is for. Now, I put a call into Monroe County Planning Commission. I'm waiting for a callback from from Eric, and I want to confirm that with Eric as well today. One person on the planning commission had a concern about sticking antennas on people's houses, but these would be very small items and they would be controlled by the, they would be regulated by the FCC.
Back to the sixties.
What's that?
Back to the sixties. We all had antennas on our house.
Yeah, right, like the old TV antennas, right?
Right.
But but a lot of people are getting away from landlines.
Yeah.
And so you're relying on the signal that you're having.
Are these inside, Derek? Are they inside?
Well, it would be an antenna on your house, I guess, and I guess.
So we're talking about cell telephone or a wifi?
Cellphone service.
Cellphone service.
So I I'm gonna get, I I have more questions.
You got any questions?
Yeah, I gotta get clarity on that, yeah.
I think Mr. Reston has a question.
Does that, does the current wording preclude things like amateur shortwave or CB radios?
Yeah, I'm, so I gotta get clarification, but when the county went back to Carson with that recommendation, Carson provided about five pages of conditions for these things, so it's not like people are gonna put up these huge contraptions, they can use for all kinds of crazy stuff. But I gotta, I gotta get clarification from the county on that.
Well, because in a lot of cases, you've got a, uh, a tr- a a transformer in the baby's room and you get a receiver someplace else.
Right.
It's all wireless and it, it sounds like your wording was so broad.
It, it's a broad term, right, and I needed, I needed, I need some more clarification on that, but I wanted to, this was, this was a recommendation that came from the county. And then I talked to Carson and I'll, I'm gonna talk to Eric Cooper about tomorrow.
I, I understand, we don't want people trying to contact Mars. But to go.
Go ahead, Bob.
Oh, no, I, I defer to our, our senior member.
Anyway. So I, I hear what you're saying, so I, I'm gonna get more information on that. I have a feeling it, it's really as simple as, uh, enhancing your cellphone coverage. You know, if you're in an area where you don't have good reception, that way you can, you can get it. Um, the other one was some clarification on, uh, some litig- not litigation, but, uh, laws and regulations on fireworks. For term rentals, uh, that it's, we did pass the ordinance and, uh, that they just need that to be referred to more often in the ordinance.
Question about the fireworks, uh, they changed the fireworks laws in Pennsylvania back in September. And it's up to the municipalities, I mentioned that to you all once, it's up to municipalities to adapt, uh, and change their laws to reflect what's allowable now or not allowable.
So, so the.
Are we doing that?
Yeah, so the comment comes as, uh, under standards concerning fireworks, uh, sales. Consumer fireworks shall, shall be sold from facilities which are licensed by the Department of Agriculture and that meet requirements of Pennsylvania Act seventy-four of twenty twenty-two. Previously, the previous act was Act forty-three of two thousand seventeen, that was crossed out. So he updated the act in the year that that act was passed.
Last year.
Has amended and the other applicable requirements of this ordinance. So maybe what you're talking about is referred to in.
I don't know, 'cause that's about purchase, I, what I, what I saw was that Pennsylvania state, whatever, changed the, you know, the hours.
I don't think that would be something, that would be.
Yeah, that's ordinance, it's, it's ordinance, I'm, I'm listening, it's not, you're talking about zoning, but. I, I would like us to consider whether or not we're gonna look at, took, into our fireworks. 'Cause all it says is, I think it says like a one-liner about our fireworks. But they did change it where you, where municipalities can amend it and give people hours, holidays, the dates they can do it if the holiday falls on a weekday. It's all been amended and it's a matter of us adapting it if we want to, so I'll, we can talk about that another time.
Um, another issue they talked about were, uh, not that we have any, well, no, I don't think we have any in the town. Facilities where you have solar systems, solar systems that are decommissioned that don't work out. Uh, the process that you have to go through to remove those, to, to decommission them and actually remove them, evidently that became an issue in some uh, boroughs or townships. One thing that, um, another really good point that Carson included that was not included in, in existing zoning ordinance in the new draft. Well, it does, he does include the definition of warehouse, but he broke down the what definition of warehouse to warehouse distribution fulfillment center and warehouse ancillary. So the diff- differences in those definitions are, um, warehouse is really, um, ware- what warehouses, that, of what you think they are, storage of items for different, different parties. Now we have distribution fulfillment centers, right, that's what these mega warehouses that everybody's concerned mostly about. That is, um, that is where you are bringing material in and shipping it out to, to, um, different properties. And so that's listed as a separate definition. And then a warehouse ancillary, that's probably the most important one, that one is a warehouse for use for your own business. So we're looking at that as conditional use in VC one, VC two, but that would be, that's not a, a, a distribution center, that is storage for your business that you have going on right, right, right there in that, on that property. So those definitions are now separated, instead of just one common definition of warehouse, now it's warehouse, warehouse fulfillment center, warehouse ancillary. And then on, on the, on warehouse, there's a lot of information in terms of setbacks and whatnot. Um, so this is, um, I, again, I, I have to get some, uh, clarification on wireless communication facility. And this in turn, if it's okay with councils, um, this will be going back to, um, Monroe County Planning Commission. So they took our original draft, they sent comments back to us and Carson. Then Carson replied to their comments with this. So I'm gonna pass this out. It's a lot of info, call me if anybody has any questions. Um, again, I don't repeat myself, I'm gonna be following up on that wireless communication.
That's all we got?
Thank you.
Anybody else? Public comment first and then executive session. Anybody have anything?
Can I, what, this real quick?
Yeah, yeah.
The tent, tent village up there, is that taken care of, is it timely, has something happened?
Nothing was changed last week when I walked by.
It was a fine, right?
There was, I think, a daily fines accruing.
Yeah, it was.
Daily fines accrue.
Pretty tough, but I haven't seen or heard any action on it.
So I think that's something we probably have to follow up with, um, Deb on. So you wanna put on me agenda to discuss?
Yeah.
An update, update.
Where do you wanna shoot, Deb email? Bill, you wanna shoot Deb email or your call?
No, uh, go ahead.
Okay, who, what is that, four, four Shepherd, four, what, what is it, I mean, when I'm not.
I think it is four.
Four, yeah.
Nothing is okay, Zach.
No, I think it's four.
Doing nothing.
Four what?
Four Shepherd.
Four Shepherd, okay.
Then there's the house down on Cherry Valley, the, the property has one house and then it has two houses, now it's got two houses and a trailer. Does anything happen in with that?
Are you on my last property?
Yeah.
What?
Down the bottom of the Kimberly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, that was, um, I believe he has permits.
Does he?
Well, I'm sure he does.
Yeah, but there was an issue with, because of Mr. Gong and his property line.
Yeah, there was a complaint, but.
Trailer is, and stuff is all over the line.
Yeah.
Onto.
I think that was a result.
That was resolved?
With the garbage.
Good.
Because I think he was putting out too much garbage and they told him, yeah, he had any upstairs.
And I thought, and I thought the trailer was over the line.
And, and found the one who was complaining about it.
Yeah.
Uh, that I don't know about, that I, I believe he has, he had the correct permit, but I know there was a garbage issue with the renovation, the gutting.
Mike, if you call Mike Manter on Wednesday when he's here. Mike should be on top of that. Same thing, yeah.
And, and then I, I just had a question on Airbnb type things. I remember six months ago or something, we passed ordinances.
We did.
People that had to be there and, you know, how, how to. Have, has there been a, a Airbnb in Water Gap that has gone through any system?
So, so, short, short, we're talking short-term rental now.
Yeah.
I, I hate the term Airbnb. So it's short, it's basically short-term rental, it's, it's short-term occupancy and they have to go through a permitting process.
So had, has, has one hour or one day or one night taken place in this borough?
I, we, we are. Saying is had, has anyone filed a permit or requested a permit for their short-term rental?
Exactly what I was.
Yeah, we gotta ask Mike, we gotta ask Mike that.
That's a good question. Coming from us.
And I don't think anyone has, so maybe it need to be reminded.
It, it would seem as if we passed a law and don't do anything about it, so why don't we just try to get it done with it?
Enforcement issue, I mean, I, we gotta figure out a mechanism.
It would be nice if we knew.
I don't know if Mike Manter is the right person to do the enforcement of it, that's the person we selected because we didn't have any.
And I think it's good, and my point is it'd be good to know how it worked in our community.
I think we need to repost that law. Put in a newsletter, put it on the post office, give everybody plenty of time to absorb it.
Yeah, I, I.
And then ask Mr. Manter to enforce it.
I'm not saying there's anything wrong, it just occurred to me, I don't.
Well, no, no one's applied and we know that they're here, I mean, but let's post it.
There should be a way for him to find out too.
And make sure everybody knows and everybody's got all the rules and they can see the form and everything. And then give, you know, opportunity to apply.
And I, I think firstly, Deb was gonna send a letter out for the people at the schoolhouse, uh, to, what was it going to be about? Uh, oh, some rules, don't talk to, you know, other people about it, this, that, the other thing. Does anyone know where that letter has been?
I did not see a letter, did anyone see a letter? I didn't see a letter.
That can be part of executive session, Terry.
I guess, but that's something to follow up with Deb, but we're not.
Okay, got it, done.
Does anybody have anything public? Go ahead, go ahead, sir.
The, uh, traffic on Waring is getting a little more aggressive with the parking alongside the castle, the, uh, tour bus or whatever that is that parks there into the, into the roadway. Uh, the public that ignores signs and likes to take tours up there. Have you noticed yesterday, one of the tail draggers knocked down a stop sign at Waring and Main Street. And it's still lying there on the ground. Um, it's, as far as I can see, is waiting for something catastrophic to happen there.
In response or follow-up, uh, Bob, to you coming to Rhodes, we reached out to Penn Dot about signage on six eleven. There's nothing on six eleven telling people going south that the road is closed the other side of town, so they one, come into town and then ignore all the signage in town and head up to Waring and.
We discussed that in the meeting, but.
Yeah, so we did, we did reach out to Penn Dot about.
This corner down here and that first half.
Yeah.
Uh, of the road is getting quite dicey. Very large vehicles and the worst thing is those tail dragger, uh, car transport.
Yeah.
What, transport?
You can see all the grues of the road.
The pickup trucks that have the, like, the three car.
Oak is starting to split.
Go right over the stop sign.
Yeah, Oak's getting cracks in it.
Oak Street's getting cracks from all those trucks.
Because they're trying to avoid eighty and.
Eight, who knows?
Since they're working on the Jersey side. And then they're working at Eastburg backing the other way up, so they all come up through here and try and find a way out and there's nowhere to go.
Meanwhile, busting up all the pipes underneath the roads.
Knocking over our signs.
Yeah, Bill, Oak Street's starting to crack.
Yeah, probably.
Oak, Oak Street's cracking.
Yeah, they're like three cracks in there.
Yeah, because it won't take it.
Yep.
Wasn't one of the reasons they closed the, the exit onto eighty was because the state was not paying to repair Waring Drive, which was not a state road? And the traffic going on that road was getting to the point that it was destroying the road map?
So taking comment here, is there something we should do and, and are not doing to prohibit those vehicles from being on Oak Street?
There's really nothing you can do, because if with six eleven being closed, they have to take the detour which takes them around and.
On Oak Street.
On Oak Street, it, the, I mean.
But there could be a sign maybe up by somewhere else on the other end to let them know.
So we asked Penn Dot just last week to put signage on six eleven, on Foxtown Hill.
Yeah.
To continue to eighty east, don't try to take six eleven south to get on eighty east.
Yeah.
But a sign's a sign, people don't pay attention to the signs.
Can we ask for a state dot to go down there and if, if these idiots continue to go around, hand out tickets?
I doubt it.
If Louis and Andy was still here, we could have done that.
I doubt they would.
They'd probably take to give up, to do traffic.
Yeah.
Been a local road.
We're dealing with a problem for a while.
I would think by now, since that road's been closed for long, that they would know it's closed.
Every time I see a truck pass by, I go, okay, where are they gonna go, where are they gonna end up?
Going past my house shaking my windows every day.
And do K turns in the middle of Main Street.
Yeah, yeah. I don't understand there, doesn't GPS show you that a road is closed?
May be excuse.
Yeah.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, yeah.
Birthday?
Yeah.
Happy birthday.
I'm gonna have to have some cake.
Ooh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Happy birthday.
Just send me that.
I'll send you a file.
Gotcha, thank you.
Anything else, anybody else? Bill, alright, we're gonna go into executive session to talk about.